Good evening, hello. Welcome to the City Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. Today's date is January 23, 2023 times 5:30 PM. And we are gathered here for a regular City Council meeting. We'll get to the agenda in just a minute, but meanwhile, I call the meeting to order with this proviso that the public is notified as follows. The mayor and council welcome comments from the public during the discussion of any items on the agenda. You have to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less so that others may be given a similar opportunity to speak. All speakers are to speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor or council and not to any council specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to questions and comments, or to have the staff respond during the meeting with those who are able to join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here, but maybe on mute?
Lottie Hough?
Here.
There we go.
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Very good. Full house. And now I read another proviso. This used to be at the end of the meeting, but we moved it to the beginning. Is as follows, that the members of the public may make any comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. Again, approach the mics, state your name and address, limit your time to three minutes unless longer is authorized by the mayor. The speakers to direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and the mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on those items by members of the public because no action may be taken on those items in order to comply with the open meetings laws. The microphone is open for public comment.
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place in Marshalltown, Iowa. I just wanted to remind the council that it is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And tomorrow, Stop Human Trafficking is going to have a presentation at the library with Last Watch. It's the Labor and Sex Trafficking Task Force that I've been a part of for eight years now, according to Lynn Carroll. And we are going to have presentations from the Marshalltown Police Department. Lieutenant Tiffany Tyne is going to be there. Also, Wings of Refuge from Ames Access and Youth and Shelter Services. It starts at 5:30. It's at the library, and it is free. So if you would like to come, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's hard for the mayor not to comment on that, but thank you very much.
My name is Jim Shaw. I live at 522 North Second Street. I've been retired for 16 years after working for Fisher Controls for 38 years as a UAW employee. I am also a sixth-degree black belt master who has taught martial arts at Iowa Valley Continuing Ed and the community Y for 30 years. I'm here today to speak about our so-called hospital. While taking a friend to his doctor's office visit Friday, the doctor said he suffered a stroke, and I should take him to the emergency room. It's only a short distance, and it would be quicker than ambulance. Because I have a limited amount of time here today, I won't go into details, but seven hours, yes, seven hours later, while we complained about the treatment my friend was not getting, the doctor finally asked if we wanted to go to Iowa City or Waterloo for treatment. Questioning why, she says they're basically a triage center. They don't have a cardiologist, neurologist, dialysis for diabetics, or an intensive care. Questioning all my friends about their medical care, only one does it in Marshalltown. Everyone else either goes to Mary Greeley and Ames or Grinnell, as I'm sure some of the people in this room do. One friend recently drove by this facility while experiencing the beginning of a heart attack to go to Mary Greeley and Ames and barely made it. He knew he didn't have time to be triaged. In a text to Councilman Lottie Hough about this, he replied, "Private business. City council doesn't get involved. Contact Unity Health." Wrong. This is not Taco John's or McDonald's. This business is responsible for the medical care of the entire population of Marshalltown, every person, making it your business. In a similar text to Councilman Thomas, he replied that private businesses requesting the city put another driveway in. Why? Do they have traffic jams? Are there numerous calls for police intervention because of traffic? No. Then what justifies it? They just want it? If they want it, and they're a private business, let them pay for it. Did we give tax breaks or other incentives for this new triage center? I don't know if we did, but if we did, we didn't get a very good deal. The problem seems to be no doctors want to come here. Again, that makes it your problem. Why don't they want to live here? Is it our schools, our housing, our businesses, or lack of businesses? Maybe when they came to town on South Sixth Street, they saw the vulgar Biden flag hanging from one of our houses and wondered, what kind of a town is this? If you think Marshalltown's hospital is currently a good situation, maybe you'll change your mind when it's your child, your spouse, or your parents that have a medical emergency and you waste critical time getting triaged. I'm asking you to really think about this. Instead of getting the emergency treatment they need in a critical life-or-death situation and time is critical, they won't get it. Do you want to waste precious time at a triage facility while they waste precious time trying to get where you need to go for the emergency care you need, and you need it now? This is wasted critical time. I'm done here, but I'm asking you guys to really think this. What if you had a heart attack right now? Where do you want to go? Do you want to go to our triage center? I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just for the record, I let you run about 20 seconds over our three-minute time limit, but thank you for coming. Any other public comment? Time for mayor, council, and administrative comments. Should we do years of service first? Anybody here for that? Okay. Well, I'd like to recognize Jerry Frye with the Sewer Department and Lori Porter with the library, both 20 years. And with that, now it's time for council or administrative comments, and I'll save my mayor comments for cleanup. Anyone up here?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Following up, this kind of fits, following up on what Mr. Shaw said, just want to confirm, Chief Ryerson, you are an EMT, correct? And have we ever had a baby in council chambers before? Is somebody here really close to delivering tonight? So Dave, you might want to stay for the whole meeting and be alert, okay? Thank you, your honor.
Anyone else? Well, as a mayor comment, I'm a day early, but I'm Irish, so I'm kind of cheap, and I'd have to put an extra stamp on this envelope to get it to Jessica Kinzer for her birthday tomorrow, and instead, I'm hand-delivering it. So happy birthday, Jessica. As we enter the budget season especially, and after we've been doing this, I think this is my fifth year, sixth year, I can't remember. I can't tell you how much I appreciate having you here, and so do have a happy birthday and thank you. All right. On for the consent agenda. Does anybody move for approval of that?
A move, your honor.
A second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Kel.
Very good. Thank you. Speed read at will.
Approve the minutes for the January 9, 2023 meeting, the list the amount of $1,564,073.05. Approve liquor license renewals for grocery store in Tortelia La Viscinadat at 505 North Third Avenue, Quick Star number 706 at 810 South Third Avenue, Fairway Stores, Inc., number 467 at 102 West Anson Street, Albarote's La Salud at 17 North First Street. Resolution 2023-008, adopting personnel policy 2.20, seatbelt usage. Resolution 2023-009, setting a public hearing for the status of funding update for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant COVID Grant Program for the Marshalltown Food Pantry. Resolution 2023-10, approving contract change order number six for the Box Culvert Repairs Project number SMW 20003, a decrease of $1,512.80. Resolution 2023-11, approving contract change order number one for the Coliseum Generator Edition Project number COL 22001. Resolution 2023-12, approving Community Development Block Grant Upper Story Rental Housing Conversion Program Development Agreement for Contract 21 HSGU 006 for the Willard Building. Resolution 2023-013, approving an agreement for services with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC to complete the Step Three of Site Certification Studies and authorizing council-designated local option sales tax as the funding source. Resolution 2023-14, authorizing Public Works to submit two structures to the Iowa Department of Transportation Highway Bridge Program. Resolution 2023-015, approving city fee schedule. Resolution 2023-016, declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing disposal thereof from the police department.
Very good. Thank you. On to item Z, we only have one motion in the motions category. What's that one?
Motion to approve a new Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service area for Haley's Deli Barbecue and Catering at 501 North Third Avenue.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, your honor. There's new ownership at Haley's, and they would like to apply for a license to serve beer, wine, and liquor. They will have an outdoor service area, which is a small covered patio area on the north side entrance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by the council or by the public? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Kel.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried. Good. Onto the next one, H ordinances. And when I have one of those, what's that one?
Ordnance 15056, to amend the Code of Ordnances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 53, Stormwater, to establish a stormwater advisory committee, third reading.
Move for approval, your honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Good evening, mayor and council. Heather Thomas, Public Works. This is our third reading for the establishment of a stormwater advisory committee. Once this passes, we'll go ahead and issue a press release and let people know that we would be accepting applications for this advisory committee. Since it's our third reading, I'll just go ahead and open it up for questions.
Are there any?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, have you had people reach out to you already that would like to be on that?
I have not.
Such a sexy committee, too. Stormwater advisory. This is a good opportunity. You know, we had a celebration not long ago over at a neighboring building here, the Coliseum, to thank people. Some had been in service over 20 years, populating these commissions and committees and ad hoc groups that we need to have to keep the city running. So while I got the microphone, and some people actually watch this on the internet or TV, let me invite anybody who is interested in doing it or would like to see how the city works and get kind of an idea why it's so important that we have people like that serving. I would invite them to do that. Enough editorializing. Anybody else up here? Otherwise, anyone out in the public? Roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Kel.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto discussion items, the first of which is the Center Street Viaduct project.
Good evening, mayor and council. Heather Thomas, Public Works. We also have with us Tony Bauer, who is with Stanley Consultants, and he's on with us virtually. Wanted to give an update on the Center Street Viaduct project and get some direction from you on what our next steps are to proceed. So this project has a couple challenges right now. Construction timing, which you guys heard about in December. We have had one update since then. We have received approval from the UP, so we are in a place now we can go out to bid when we want, and they are not requiring with this current project to go ahead and upgrade the railing. So our existing railing is acceptable to them for the repairs that we have outlined. If we go out to bid right now, the lead times and the materials will not allow us to construct in 2023. So we did attempt to do emergency procurement of materials, and that did not go well because of the costs that came back. So that is our second challenge, the construction costs. In December of '22, we had an estimate of construction for this project of about $1.9 million. Based on the materials that we've received back in those quotes, we have an updated cost estimate from Stanley Consultants of $2.9 million. This is presenting us about a $958,000 funding shortfall. So I'd like to go through a couple of options and then open the floor up for discussion and invite Tony with Stanley Consultants to provide some answers for any questions you have as well. First option is to continue with the current project. This is going to replace the roller bearings in the finger expansion joints, replace the deck drains, repaint the existing pedestrian railing, repair the gun club north vaulted abutment with an overlay on top of that portion of it, and then a little bit of south abutment slab work. As far as timing, because we do have UP approval, we could go ahead and go out to letting with this this spring here in the next month or two. This would allow for construction in 2024. Based on the current estimates, this is that funding shortfall I mentioned of $957,000. Option two is to go ahead and proceed with a very similar project and remove repainting of the existing pedestrian railings. Timing would be the same. Continue with our bid this spring, and we would estimate a funding shortfall of about Option three is going to go out to bid for the similar project, less the railings and also removing the north abutment work. So that would be the repairs to inside the gun club and the overlay immediately over the gun club on the north vaulted abutment. Construction timing would be the same with a bid this spring and construction in 2024. The estimated funding shortfall on this is $586,000. Option four was looking at this project and going out and seeing what potential other outside funding sources could help us. And the unfortunate part of this is that finding those funds and applying for them would delay the project further than that. So we do feel there is a funding source out there. The Highway Bridge Program, we frequently call this the City Bridge Fund Program. We have a 95% confidence that we would be awarded a maximum grant of $1.5 million. It is a federal and state program, so that is assuming they don't make any changes to that program, although this program has been a pretty stable program from history. We would go ahead and apply for those funds now. We would know in November or December of this year whether we received or was offered those fundings. Because this is federal fund, we would have to go through a DOT bid letting and wait for those federal funds to be available, which means we could not do a formal bid letting through the DOT until October or November of 2024. With the material lead times, that means construction would be delayed till 2025. With this option, right now, the funding that's been allocated towards this project plus that $1.5 is approximately where we're at right now for an estimated total cost if we delayed it that long. So those are the four options that are on the table. I went ahead and kind of summarized those in this chart here. As far as funding shortfall options, there are options with our current bonding, whether that's a reallocation of existing bond funds from the street improvement program to this project, or if we look at earmarking the next round of geo-bonds and utilizing road use tax as an interim financing option. Other options on the table, the less desirable would be pulling from road use tax, the cash on hand in that account, and potentially a small contribution from local option sales tax as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for questions and discussion.
Your honor?
Yes.
Heather, before I joined the council, we had already been in discussion about how bad the Center Street Viaduct is. I was hoping that you'd be able to shed a little light on if this grant has been, if our confidence that the grant is going to continue on is based on the fact that it's been in existence for quite a long time. Have we applied for the grant in the past and not been able to secure it? That's the first question. The second is, if we were to delay, I am for an option that gets this moving sooner rather than later because it's absolutely horrible. But if we were to delay it, is there anything we could do at that finger joint that makes all of our cars shake and our tires pop while we wait until construction could begin? Is there a plate, a filling, something?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and open it up with Tony, who's online now, if he wants to hop in and talk about that. We did discuss that a little bit. The finger joints right now that stick up, there was an option potentially to cut off some of those joints, so it's the joints not actually sticking out where you hit, but that elevation distance would still be present. Go ahead, Tony. I'm going to open it up and see if you'd like to provide any additional insight on that.
Yeah, this is Tony Bauer, Stanley Consultants. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you guys virtually. I'd much rather be there in person to discuss this with you if possible, but unfortunately in quarantine now. So yes, we have been discussing different options we can do with that expansion joint if we were to postpone the full replacement and kind of clean out of that area a couple of years. And as Heather mentioned, one of the concerns is those finger joints kind of breaking off and causing an issue for everybody that uses that bridge all the time. So we'd want to come up with some kind of way to protect that, whether it's removing part of those finger joints, just cutting them off, or as mentioned, you know, there could be a potential to put a temporary plate over it. That's an option we could look at as kind of a temporary fix. Neither of those are ideal, and neither of those are long-term solutions. But if the interest is to pursue this additional funding source, those are both viable options to get us there, to put kind of a temporary Band-Aid on this problem in order for that funding to become available.
And Heather, as for the grant and its viability and our application status?
Yeah. So currently, when I review the existing list that's been submitted to the state for this, Marshalltown does not have any structures that have been submitted to this funding opportunity in the recent past. I don't know long term. I'm assuming that we've had some in the past. We just currently don't have any on that list. Earlier tonight in the consent agenda, you did approve me applying two of our structures that are qualified for that list, and I will get those applied for this year.
Other questions or comments up here?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, by waiting until 2025, the bridge will hold itself till then, correct?
I asked Stanley the same question. I just want to make sure that if we are recommending delaying, that we're not causing a safety concern. And really, the concern that was brought about was that the joint itself, in that discussion, we're talking about as far as the difference there. One of the things mentioned is that we would want to make sure that we continue to monitor and make sure that the elevation difference between the two slabs are not changing over the next year and a half, two years. But outside than that, I'd turn it over to Tony to address any other concerns he would have from a structural point, but at this time, I'm not aware of any.
Thank you. So far, it's okay for Gary Thompson to drive that van over there? Okay. Jeff?
So far, Tony was saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony.
I was just going to confirm exactly what Heather was saying. So at this location, our concern is corrosion going on with the bearings through that leaking joint. It is not in a position where it could pose a significant safety risk for the structure. Our concern is the durability of the ride for this period of time in the next couple of years. So if those bearings were continued to corrode and have section loss, there is a chance for the differential of that slab to increase. And so that's where we definitely would want to monitor and make sure it's not getting worse. If it were to get worse, we would look at getting in there and having to do some significant repairs or potentially pull traffic off. Right now, it is low posted, so that we don't have heavy vehicles that could potentially cause some issues at those bearings for the structure. But as long as we get the bearing and the joints repaired within the next couple of years, we're confident that the structure will be able to extend the service life quite a bit.
Your honor, I have a question.
You do.
Somewhat related. Either way, we're going to have to shut down Center Street for construction season at least. What is our plans for traffic control with the other two viaducts? I know that Sixth Street in the mornings and evening rush hour is, I mean, we can't complain in Marshalltown about traffic, but if you can complain about anywhere, it's there. What are the plans for that intersection in particular?
Yeah. So at this time, the intersection of Sixth Street and High Street, the improvement we're looking at is this year, we are widening the southeast radius of that intersection. That's that request from the fire department to allow traffic to get in and out of there. The city did hire a consultant when the fire station went in to review that intersection, traffic counts at that intersection, and look at the need for a traffic signal. At that time, it did not warrant a traffic signal, which is why there's just the preemption signal there today. This past year, we had those traffic counts redone, and the traffic counts did not vary substantially from the initial ones, meaning that a warrant is still not met for a traffic signal there. For this project, we are going to sign a detour route on the third Viaduct and ask that people follow it. We will still keep the cloverleafs down to the Y open for traffic. Those will essentially come one-way, cloverleafs for the duration of this project, and then ask that everybody abide by those detour routes.
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
So Heather, so if I'm doing the math from the original proposal back in 2021, when we actually first started talking about this in 2020, I think, we've already experienced a 52% price increase on Phase One, give or take. So if we apply that to the entire project, all three phases, we're chasing, and not knowing what price increases will be in the future for the other two phases, we're chasing an $8 million project just to make it roadworthy again.
To clarify, the initial cost estimate presented to City Council in June of 2021 was approximately $1.5 million for construction. We're currently at $3 million for construction, so that's a 200% increase or a doubling of that project. So the Phase Two estimate that was presented to council in June of 2021 was $4 million of construction. So we would be looking at $11 million if you would prorate it for the same.
And then what was the weight limit when the viaduct was first built? Because now it's down to 20 tons. So what did we lose so far?
It was standard traffic. So the standard traffic that's allowed by DOT on all collector streets. Tony, do you remember the exact weight limit? Is it like H44? But how that equates to a weight limit?
Yeah, it's the Iowa legal loads. Yeah, so I believe it was like an HS20 load.
So what is that compared to the 20 ton that's on it now?
I'd have to get back to you exactly on that.
Well, the reason I'm asking this, where I'm going with this is, we shouldn't spend a dime on the viaduct, in my opinion. We should demo it, and I'm sure that price has gone up. It was originally quoted at $800,000. To demo the viaduct, that's probably going to be $1,200,000, which we have that money we borrowed. And then we wait two years or a year, and we apply for a federal grant for a brand-new viaduct and get a four-lane viaduct, which is going to, I guarantee you, our share of that, looking at a crystal ball, is going to be less than the $8 million we're going to spend on these three phases. Or you're saying $11 million. I guarantee you, we won't put $11 million into a new viaduct because the federal government loves building new things. They don't like repairing old things. So I think this council is stewards of taxpayers' money. We shouldn't put a dime into this because we've already wasted three years, and who knows what the final cost is going to be? I hope your $11 million is high, but that's my opinion on this. Thank you.
As far as the funding goes, and I'll touch upon that a little bit, we do go out and look for funds and notice the funding availabilities all the time. You'll hear the federal government, the bipartisan infrastructure law and those types of things talk about a lot of money being available. The amount of that money that's available to our community is very, very limited and very competitive, and I am definitely not comfortable saying that if we went in and demoed the bridge as it is today and then waited a little while and applied for new funding for a new viaduct, that we would have any level of funding that would reduce our local share to be less than the $11 million. In addition, if we demo the existing bridge over the UP Railroad, getting a permit back from the UP Railroad to put a new one in would be extremely difficult.
Your honor, may I follow up, please?
You may.
Well, since the population of Marshalltown hasn't changed that much since I was young, we got by with we got by with two viaducts, now we have four. So going to three, if that is, if you're correct and I'm wrong, we still have enough flow across the north-south axis to town. So I don't have a problem with it.
Other council comments or questions before we open it up to the public?
Your Honor?
Yep.
I'm opposed on demoing and getting rid of it as it's kind of a segue and gateway into our downtown, which we're spending a lot of money into. So I just want to say that for the record. I guess my question is, in delaying it, do we have anything that spurs up on the approvals that we already have in place, whether it be with Union Pacific or otherwise, that would have to revisit a year from now as we progress things? Since we're putting it on hold, if that's the direction being set?
Yeah, we have an agreement right now that I believe went into effect in October of 2022 that gave us one year to go ahead and get this bid through UP. With, under the UP approval, we have, that would require an extension request, but I don't see that being an issue.
And then only, I guess, other question is, based on the timeline of some of the discussion on Option 4, and being that there's some inflation percentage tied to the construction costs, is, in your mind, is there any opportunity to mitigate that by still doing some preordering or otherwise, if we're still talking the same construction plan as it is?
The downside to that is when we get into federal grant funds and the audit requirements, I think purchasing material ahead of the project would take that out of the project costs. And I think there could be concern about getting reimbursement for anything the city purchased ahead and how that might tie in with federal funds.
Anyone else at the council level?
Yeah, I got one more question. So how long do you think it would be until we hear on this $1.5 million in funding?
I think we would have an answer from them either in November or December of this year.
Okay, so still quite a ways out. So we're fully informed, would there be a way to get a short-term mitigation estimate on those expansion joints about how much that would cost?
Tony, can I defer to you on that?
Yes, we can. It would not take much for us to come up with some ideas to do a short-term repair. I think the goal there would, to try to be able to do it with city staff and city forces, to try to get that, you know, kind of that temporary solution in place. So we'd be able to come up with some ideas for you guys, you know, within a couple of weeks, I would think.
The application for this grant funding that I'm referring to is not due till October 1st of this year. So there is time to table this item and get additional information if that's the direction you'd like to proceed.
Any other council comment or question? Otherwise, mics open to the public.
Yes, number one, I didn't hear anything about a timeframe for this construction. How long it's going to take to do this?
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but I know for those that are watching and couldn't hear you as you were walking up here, you're Jim Shaw again. You don't need the address again. Go ahead.
Name is Jim Shaw, and I didn't hear anybody say how long this construction would take. And so I'd like a timeframe on how long it's going to be closed down. And if you live on the north side of town and you're headed to the south side of town, a four-lane bridge, sounds great. You got my vote.
Right now, it's going to be contractor-dependent, but we said we want it done in one construction season. I'd like that to be the four-to-five month, maybe six-month timeframe of when it would actually be closed. But there would need to be some allowance for the contractor to make that decision. If we go through a DOT letting, they are the ones that assist in some of those working days allotments. And generally, they're a little bit more forgiving and open than what the city may be in a timeframe.
Other public comment?
That means it's probably time for a suggestion about staff, what sort of direction the staff would like.
I would say just kind of, it seems like consensus is to be interested and to know what it's going to cost to do sort of the temporary place to see how viable Option 4 is. And we can bring that back to the February 13th meeting. That's three weeks from tonight, so hopefully that'll be enough time for Stanley Consultants to come up with what that estimate and what that might look like.
That's what I heard. Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Very good, thank you. Onto the next discussion item, which is the compost hours of operation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Heather Thomas, Public Works. So this item is being brought up just as an option on the table that I'd like to know if there's any support that we proceed with. Right now, our compost facility is open seven days a week, and we are running a deficit. And our expenses are exceeding our revenue out there. This past year, we did look at what we were charging for gate fees for the intake of material and made some adjustments primarily in those larger loads. We don't anticipate that the adjustments we made to clear that deficit. We're also looking at different capital equipment purchase needs for the production of compost in the next three years. We look to be fine utilizing cash on hand and what we're going to be getting in revenue with the projected expenses for this fiscal year, fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24. But when we get to fiscal year '25, we would not have funds on hand to purchase the equipment we need. This solution or option that we're presenting tonight of reducing the days of operations our compost facility is open does not solve that entire problem, but it's a step in the right direction in order to reduce the expenses and try to build some revenue. So currently, we're open seven days a week. Monday through Friday, we're open from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. On Saturday, we're open from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and on Sunday, we're open from noon to 4:00 p.m. I did look at the last two years of information on our compost facility, and we've had 48 days out there where we did not bring in material to even cover the staff wages of our compost attendants that service that facility. We currently use six part-time compost attendants, three in the first half of the season and three in the second half of the season. They make $9 an hour and they get a 25 cent raise. Every year, they're here up to a maximum of $10. So as you can see in this table, let me see if I can blow it up a little bit. Of those 48 days I mentioned, Wednesday seems to be the day that we have had the least amount of stuff come in. So there's been 10 days where our compost fees, the gate fees, did not cover staff wages, followed by Thursday, and then we had several with seven days each. I'm going to go ahead and move on to another slide. This is just analyzing how much material that we're bringing into the compost facility on a daily basis. As you can see, Saturday is our largest day for what we bring in for material, followed by Tuesday, Monday, Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, and finally on Sunday. I did the same thing with the sale of compost on your next screen. And you will see the top four days of the week again are Saturday, Friday, Monday, and Tuesday. A couple of the options that we would like some input, see if there's any interest in pursuing, would be to close the compost facility several days a week. The two options we've outlined are based on the statistics that I just read in the previous three pieces. One would be to keep the compost facility open Monday, Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday. We estimate a potential wage savings of about $8,700 a year. Option two would be to open the facility Tuesdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays with a potential savings of about $10,200 a year. This is, again, totally an option thing. It's not something we have to do, but we wanted to see if there was any support in doing this. In addition to helping us with the gap between revenue and expenses, we have had issues staffing the compost facility. Doing one of these options where we would close three days a week would allow us to go from six attendants to four attendants in a given year. And like I said, we've struggled to get all six hired. And I'll open that up for discussion.
One thing I can anticipate, a tension between those of us that do our own raking and the commercial haulers. And so I'm wondering which days of the week they'll miss the most, the commercial haulers will. And I know which days of the week those of us that work, that Monday through Friday, will miss.
Right, and so I don't, we don't have, keep statistics as far as the breakdown whether the material coming in is by a resident or by somebody that's doing it for a business. But looking at the total statistics, that's kind of how we tried to set, recommending either a Monday, Tuesday, Saturday, Sunday, or a Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and keeping the lower days. We always have that option for commercial haulers, that they have a $500 license that gives them a gate code, and they're able to dump all seven days, 24 hours a day. We then have gate records when their code is typed in in the camera system to assist in tracking and the cost of those. But those are on the table. We want to try to minimize the impact to most people as much as possible. But we also feel, as long as we communicate with the public that we're closed on a certain day, they'll plan accordingly. And if they were going to bring material in on Thursday, they'll bring it in on Friday, Saturday, or one of the days we're open.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, I would suggest that all your commercial haulers be required to have a gate key, and then I would only open the compost facility on Saturdays and Sundays.
I'm happy to entertain that if that's an interest. I don't have any objections to that if the council would like to proceed that way.
Other feedback from the council?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
I'd add Fridays to that, but I could be open to three days a week as well.
The only negative that I could see about only doing Saturdays and Sundays, currently, a customer can pay for our assistance in loading compost into their vehicle. We only do that during business hours of street department staff time being on staff to help them, which is Monday through Friday. So if we do switch to a Saturday, Sunday only, we would essentially no longer be able to load compost because our equipment can't be driven by our compost attendants.
I'd like to chime in with what Jeff said. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I think would probably see the most usage from homeowners. So I'm up with Jeff here.
Your Honor?
Yes.
My thought on the loading, I do think it's great customer service, but once they leave in their truck to take that labor-intensive load somewhere else, there's nobody there to system as well. So I think it's a great customer service option with the model we have, but I don't really feel like keeping the compost area open more days because of that service is really viable.
Did I understand that Friday is the day when it could be the compost day?
If the compost facility was open on Friday, our street department staff are available to load during normal business hours, yes.
Other council comment?
I think I preferably want to keep the Friday in there. I think we're already reducing it significantly. And so from those that have extended weekends or taken vacation to do some yard work or otherwise, it makes sense to make sure there's some availability and not shrink it down to the bare minimum. So I'd vote to not shrink it all the way down to just the weekend alone.
Your Honor, if I may? Yeah, I'm okay with the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This isn't something that we're going to set in stone and it's going to stay that way. You know, you're going to, obviously, you're going to hear about it through your staff. So we can revisit this, but I'm okay with Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I mean, and then, like I said, the haulers, they've got access 24/7, right?
Right, they just have to get their compost license, yep.
So do you want a motion?
That would be great.
I'd make a motion that the compost is only open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays.
Second.
Any further, I guess we haven't asked for public comment on this yet. Anybody else up here like to speak first? Otherwise, the mics open for public. Okay, roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
That carried, the staff has this direction. Back in an earlier life, one of the three motions I was proudest of making was to open it on Sundays, actually. So I'm glad we're keeping the Sunday time. All right, on to the next one, which is discussion of the 2023 Raze Grant Application.
Yeah, I was going to say Heather and Michelle are part of this equation as well. The, we are still waiting for a debriefing on our Raze Grant application from 2022 that did not get funded. We have requested that multiple times, and we hope that we'll be able to get that before the next application would be due on February 28th. And so we're at a point where we're kind of internally questioning what makes sense and broke it down to really three options, which would be not to apply, allow the DOT to move forward with their resurfacing project, which would essentially mean the curb lines will stay where they are. I think that's the biggest thing with the proposed Highway 14 project for this grant. Second option would be to apply, as we have in past years, for the, what amount we believe is fundable through them for the entire corridor. And then a, well, and I'll go 2A on that, would be narrow our corridor, but we might struggle with some points on the cost-benefit analysis, but not impossible to look at. And then option three would really be, do we want to look at a planning grant for this? Muscatine was successful in getting a Raze Planning Grant, which essentially pays for the engineering, which on a project of this size is no small thing. I think we were in the $2 million range on engineering alone and the design and engineering. So a planning grant is not a small thing. So before anybody invested a lot of time heavily on staff, we just wanted to see where you all were in terms of what you would like us to proceed with and get your input.
Questions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
So I assume we cannot apply for both the planning grant and the Raze Grant? Or can we apply for both, knowing that if we don't get one, we can possibly still get the other? I mean, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by not just applying for both? Or is that not possible?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. I don't know that it's restricted that you can't apply for it. I know you cannot receive both. So we couldn't receive the planning grant and the capital because the capital would include, obviously, some of those kind of efforts. I'll have to confirm whether or not we could actually apply for both. I think probably biggest thing would be what amount of effort goes into preparing two applications, potentially just that time and stuff dedicated. If we're going to put forward those efforts, limited capacity, so.
I assume both of those are being submitted to the same group of people, and therefore, the information for the same Highway 14 corridor should be close, if not identical, outside of maybe some sections being removed. So I guess I challenge that that's not a significant effort to submit an additional one. I guess my only other thing is I, this is a game changer in that area of our community. So I, to do a resurfacing is nice, but to have a $20 million facelift, maybe probably a lot more than just that in that area of our community and that coming in from the north side of town, I think. At least I lean toward resubmitting that application and making sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. I don't know who or what the hangup is, but I guess I'd make sure we are putting 100% of our energy into making sure we get a debrief because that's unacceptable from whatever level where people are in charge at the state level or otherwise.
Yeah, the debrief comes from the federal side.
I did just do some Googling in the FAQs, and it says, "To the extent possible, the Department of Transportation encourages applicants to submit applications for either planning or capital projects. However, an applicant can submit an application for a project that includes both pre-construction activities and construction. If funding is awarded to both phases of that project, it would be designated as a capital project." So I might want some more clarification on that and in terms of what all is defined as pre-construction activities to ensure that it's covering the planning side of things fully.
Anybody else up here? Jeff?
Yeah, Your Honor, what feedback have we gotten from the previous rounds of this? What are we missing?
So I think, you know, we've, this would be our fourth application round. So we've had two debriefings so far. We've had initial feedback, did include, related to utility infrastructure was one of the items. And I apologize because sometimes I get them confused as to which round was which. But we did have feedback at one point about the utilities being included and really the DOT focuses surface. And so kind of some separation, we did do that in our most recent application. So we had our project costs, you know, like other projects, had gone up. So we were requesting a similar amount, yet we had a much larger matching contribution because of that in this last round, and that's what we're still waiting on debrief. A big portion of this does ride on political support. waiting on debrief. A big portion of this does ride on political support as well. The way that the criteria is ranked in, several federal grants, state grants, give you very specific point orientations. This grant does not necessarily do that. They have a recommend, highly recommended, recommended, and then unacceptable, unacceptable standards. And that's where you're categorized based on the merit, and then those can be kicked up and down, really based on political support, and then recommended by the secretary for those that meet the merit. So it's a challenge to determine where you can't exactly pinpoint that had we answered this question differently, we would have received this, because there is just a lot at play there that's not necessarily point-driven.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, Michelle, does it, do you think it's working against us that it's actually a state highway, that the federal government's looking at it as, why isn't the state kicking in money for this?
The state actually is kicking in money. I think their estimated contribution was 1.5 million for the resurfacing. So that was something. But you get to the point of where we made changes for the 2022 application, which was, we didn't have Marshalltown Waterworks coming up with any money. We weren't supporting the cost of the sanitary and storm sewer. So we did make it more of a street project rather than a full reconstruction that was on the grant.
Then the other thing, does the poverty level in that, it was Anson all the way out to the river, right?
Right, yeah.
Does that rate into this at all?
It does. There are certain categories. If you are a area of persistent poverty or a historical thing, we fall under one of the census tracts, not the entire field, but one of the census tracts that does pass through this area does qualify under that. We also fit under the rural designation. So the way that some of the funding is broken out, they do allocate certain percentage towards those rural or the persistent poverty. You know, so we do classify as those. I do think there's a lot of projects that probably also meet that. So again, just it becomes very competitive. We know it's a very highly competitive program.
One of the things in last year's criteria, which I think is the same, is I believe that it's like under $500,000 is rural.
200.
200. So, but we were looking at Des Moines, we're competing with Des Moines in the rural category. And so in Iowa, it doesn't quite mean the same thing.
So I guess what I'm saying, what I'm going to say here is, I want Third Avenue fixed. I mean, we all, we all do. I mean, there basically are no curbs, you know, because the streets, the highway's been paved over so many times. You know, there's all kinds of flow problems as far as traffic and flow problems as far as stormwater. Man, how many times are we going to be turned down? Pretty soon, we'll have spent the $2 million, you know what I mean?
I mean.
It's like, I want to do it, but I'd hate, because we're looking at another $60,000, right?
Well, we've, the initial, the first time we applied, we had a large expense because that did involve a lot of the engineering work.
Yes. So the first time, I think it was $45,000 that we spent. The second application was between 20 and 25. In this last time, there was a lot more work that was done internally. And so we were in, I think, maybe the $5,000 range.
So it's not that we'll have like another, we'll be able to reuse a lot of that same information, certainly.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if we're reusing the same information, is that why we're losing?
Well, when I say the same information, it's primarily the engineering work, right? Those things aren't changing.
Accident reports, types of accidents, things like that over time.
Yep.
So now I need to go wreck my van to help a store hire?
Can you do that within a couple of weeks?
Before the application.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, you've gone through this three times now. If you look at the three options, what's the smartest thing for us to do?
You know, I don't know the answer. It is hard not having not had that debriefing yet, because then we would at least know if we were in a recommended or highly recommended category. I feel like that would play a role. I certainly agree. I mean, we all know this is a very important project, and the chances of getting funding like this, you know, it doesn't come along very often. So we want to continue to try that. I think a lot of communities have often taken three or four times. We've seen that. That's not uncommon with this funding, is that you often have to get in front of them several times. So if we can apply for both, as, you know, Councilmember Isom mentioned, you know, I think that we can certainly look at that, or that our project, you know, I think has typically contained, you know, all of that. I think that potentially the advantage of a planning grant is it would position us maybe more competitive for funding in a future year, where it goes through, part of that planning goes through the higher levels of community engagement that they're looking for, some of that environmental piece, you know, it would dive us deeper into the details and potentially answer some questions. But there's no guarantee on that either. So we just, we wanted to bring it forward, knowing that it is a significant, a significant project. I would love to see us funded. I think it's, we, I feel like after four years, I feel like after three years, we deserve to be funded. I was really disappointed that we weren't. So, you know, I don't have a solid answer on it. I just, I do know it's a very competitive process, so.
And I agree with Gary. Everyone up here knows how bad, you know, Third Avenue needs to be redone. It's just what gives us the best chance of getting us there, is what I'm looking at. So I guess myself, if we could apply for both without it giving us a black mark, then I think that would probably be the smart way to go.
Yeah, we can definitely put that question forward if it's not already out there on the FAQs. We'll dive into that a little bit deeper. There's, you know, been multiple webinars already on the RACE. They've got two more that I've got scheduled to watch here in the coming weeks. So, you know, those kind of questions are coming out with those webinars and stuff as well.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
This is one of those, we got to do it, you know, because if we don't, we're going to pay for this ourselves. There's no way, you know. It's, this is just the cost of doing business with the federal government, you know. So whatever, whatever the council decides what direction to go, I mean, whatever you think, Michelle.
I'm glad you said that. I'm glad that Gary asked that question, because I've been thinking, you know, you've brought millions of dollars into this town because of your grant, making your grant applications and that sort of thing. And I trust your judgment in the number of years you've been here, to figure out how to balance your time on either grant or both of them, or which one gets the highest priority. And how soon do you think we'll hear to get to know how?
They, well, hopefully, on the debriefing, hopefully we'll know soon. The awards on this one, they're anticipating making June 28, by June 28, so this summer.
Which really probably means July or August.
Yeah.
But that means we probably need to give you a quicker direction than that.
Well, I would say that tonight, we just really want to know, do you want us to move forward? It's due February 28, so you'll have a resolution that'll need to come before you, probably at the next meeting, authorizing us to formally apply and submit applications. We won't know all of our final numbers at that point, so I don't expect that we will. We may still be, those still might be a little bit in flux, but I hope to have a better idea by that point.
I sense like a consensus that the council would like you to do that, but I'll invite anybody up here to disagree with me. And we haven't asked the public to talk. Let me do that. I don't see anybody jumping up. Okay. I doubt you need a formal motion for that? Do we have a consensus?
No. We were just really looking for what is the, what's the feeling of the council at this point, and I think we've got it.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for all the work that you guys do on this stuff. If the public only knew how much time it does take you to do and how successful we've been in these competitive grants, they would appreciate it. All right, on to budget items. Number one, taxable valuations.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So at the last meeting, I brought you forth the assessed values. So now tonight, we're going to talk about the taxable values. So we'll go to this chart here. So how do you get from assessed to taxable? You take the value of your house, which is close to fair market value, or is the assessed value, and you apply the rollback. So for each job or for each classification of property, you have a different rollback rate. So you can see here, the residential has grown a little bit, well, primarily because they've now, for this fiscal year '24, they've consolidated the multi-residential with the residential class. So in FY '24, the rollback is 56.5%. The multi-residential goes to zero since it's consolidated. The commercial was always at 90% for a rollback, but the legislature also changed that. So now the first $150,000 is taxed at the residential rate, and then after that, it's the 90% rollback, and same for industrial. So the commercial and industrial, we do get a backfill on that, but that backfill is being phased out. So the legislature is squeezing us every year. So, try to make this a little bit bigger, smaller, I mean. So you can see the total residential, it went up by about 58 million. The commercial actually went down 15 million. The industrial went up just a little bit, 7 million. And the multi-residential went to zero. So it went down a lot. And then the gas and utilities went up by 19 million. So how does this play into anything related to budget? We're going to go back and show you for our general fund. So we takes our taxable valuation, and we multiply it times our $8.10 levy divided by 1,000. So you can see the increase in valuations coming across here back from fiscal year '19, and then the percent increase. So you can see it's up and down all over the place. So in dollars, going from 7.7 million to almost $8 million this year. And the reason for that is that business property tax credit that I explained last time. So the first $150,000, now the business and industries are taxed at the residential rate, the state is supposed to pay us for that difference. So we're estimating that to be almost $200,000. So is there any questions on that? If not, we can go on to the next topic. So we want to talk about the general fund. First, I want to just talk about the assumptions we made to build the budget. So basically, we're having the same programs that we're currently using, status quo budget in that respect. We do have wage increases that were negotiated through our union contracts. They're all 3%, except for the police, and they are 3.25%. And those contracts are good through the end of fiscal year '24. So we also budgeted non-contract positions at the 3% as well. Our health insurance did go up this January, this current month, increased by 11.5%. We build in another 10% for next year. We budgeted all positions as if they were full the entire year, except for the military deployment positions. In the past, we talked about, well, maybe we should have a vacancy factor, because we know over the course of a year, that positions are going to be vacant, especially in the police department. But we went ahead and budgeted in full. There was no change in the IPR's contribution rate, but when your wages go up, that dollar amount goes up as well. There was a decrease in the municipal fire and police retirement. The employees pay 9.44%, and then the city share goes up and down. So this year, it went down from 23.9 to 22.98. Like always, our road use tax, some of that is transferred to the general fund to cover wages for the public works department, and a small portion for human resources and the city administrator. The levy for the Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center continues to be budgeted at $100,000. This is supported by a tax levy. The band went from $11,000 to $9,000, and they were here last time. So that is also supported by an instrumental music tax levy. Mileage reimbursement is, we use the state rate, which is currently 50 cents a mile, and meals are reimbursed at the state per diem rates. So the backfill I talked about with the industrial and commercial property, again, that's being phased out. So our general fund share is about $170,000. So that's decreasing by almost $48,000 every year. We get $48,000 less. The general fund property tax levy is in the finance department's budget, just for ease of not having to split every payment out amongst all the funds. So you will notice that. We continue to request the full amount, the $8.10 regular levy, and the 27 cent emergency For FY '23, when asking the insurance agent what to anticipate, he said a 20% increase over last fiscal year, and so, and also another 20% increase next fiscal year. So we built that in there. The support of the local emergency management levy, we increased that by 5%. Hotel motel tax, as you know, we changed that contract from a few years ago, and now we're providing payments to the Convention and Visitors Bureau at 56%. However, when we're looking at how much we're actually collecting, we increased our revenue from $480,000 to $600,000, which means we pay CVB that much more. If you did lower the rate to 50%, that would save the city about $36,000. However, they're under contract for another year. And let's see what else. So across the board, we saw very large increases for utilities, vehicle and gas, diesel, maintenance agreements, and supplies all across the board. Not because they're using more, just because it costs more, as you know, in your own home budget. So overall, for this fiscal year '24, we're looking at a deficit of $312,000. And we're going to go over some of the options in a minute. So if you didn't want to reduce expenses, you could just use the fund balance, and that is right here. So in their general fund, at the end of June of last year, we had $3.5 million. We are in a deficit projection for this current year. We do need to sharpen our pencil a little bit better on this year, account for the different vacancies and such. And then with our projected deficit for FY ' '24, $312,000, we'd be sitting at $3.1 million. You could use that money to cover the deficit. But as you know, unless valuations go up and if the legislature stops squeezing us, changing things around, it's an ongoing problem. So the cash flow reserve, that's part of our general funds as well. We try to keep 16% of our general fund expenditure budget in there. So when we talk about local option sales tax at the next meeting, you'll see that I put in adding $160,000 to this fund. You cannot withdraw this money without a hearing. So not recommending that we touch the cash flow reserve fund, but you could use the general fund money. Another option would be to use local option sales tax.
I was going to say, I was going to cover that and the whole option, so we can go over that here in just a moment.
Yep. Okay.
One of the things that I thought was really helpful, because this is not the first time we find us in a deficit situation, and when you look at just the budget comparison report that is in here, this larger report that goes through the line items by department, what you don't tend to see is what's not supported by the general revenues of the general fund. For example, we'll be talking about this in a little bit, but our employee benefits for employees in the general fund are supported with a separate tax levy that comes in. Any of our property and liability insurance is also supported with a levy that is coming in. And so one of the things I just want to kind of highlight for you, because it is new in terms of discussion, is what are those general revenues, and what are those general expenses? is what are those general revenues, and what are those general expenses, and where does that play out at? So I have listed other things here. I think one of the things that's easy for somebody from the public to say is, well, why are you funding the band? Let's cut the band. That doesn't actually save us nine thousand. That just means there's not nine thousand dollars from a separate tax levy coming in to pay that nine thousand out. And so there are quite a few things that we have that are related to that way. So as we talk about like general revenues, that is our eight-ten levy and twenty-seven cent emergency levy, as well as ag, land, mobile home, and the backfill that's coming in on things as well. Same with this new business property tax credit backfill. That is also basically now a general revenue of the city as well. We have a utility excise tax that is associated with our valuations, that is part of that, cable franchise fee, and then any hotel motel tax, less what we have out on contract. And then a big one for this year has been interest on investments. We've been earning significantly more than we have in the past, so that's come into play more so than it has in the past. So generally, we're looking at just a little under nine million dollars in general revenues to support expenses. And as Diana mentioned, we do have a deficit of three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So you can guess, you know, we've got nine point two million dollars in expenses. And so we broke this down by department, and those that are in green are highlighted as sort of revenue generators. And so most departments, there are exceptions, mostly on the administrative side, do have some level of departmental revenue that's coming in where you could, for the most part, say if they weren't, if they weren't doing that, our expenses might change as well. So we've kind of subtracted those departmental revenues out to give you here truly is that bottom line cost after you take everything out. And that is now kind of here for the first time for you all to see about where the levels of general fund support are at for various departments. And I won't go through the graphs or anything or the charts, but just wanted to put this out there, as there is a lot of detail here. And this was really looking at sort of the basis of some of the recommendations for closing that general fund deficit, which I'm not gonna go into in-depth here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have here about the attachment. So I will say, I did have Heather question my math on this on Friday, and I had to explain that, so it's basically the bottom line number is three hundred and twelve thousand plus, you know, one through ten here. So I would say, you know, doing all of that gets us to a pretty positive position, though some of these items do need to be looked at, sort of not as together, separate, specifically non-bargaining cola and non-bargaining furlough days, I think those would need to be looked at separately. So I'm happy to answer any questions about what's on the list. Diana and I are happy to take any feedback about things that you would like to see added, so that when we come back on our special meeting next week on the thirtieth, we can have a more in-depth discussion of anything that you would like to see to help close a three hundred and twelve thousand dollar gap. To, one thing Diana pointed out to me last week is, yes, we have fund balance, we can use fund balance. It just doesn't look as great in our bond ratings or other things when we're talking about dipping into that fund balance to manage our operations. So I opened it up to all of you for questions, comments, anything.
Your Honor, I have a general question before we get into these line item things.
Okay.
After the meeting, the work session, was that August or September we had that?
The franchise fee work session? Yeah, I think it was August.
So this, is it safe to say that this three hundred and twelve thousand dollar deficit is really an understatement, because we're not budgeting properly for the maintenance of the attached building specifically, and other ongoing maintenance issues? So our deficit's really more than three hundred and twelve thousand?
I would say that one of the things that Heather and David Deemer did in pretty much every building budget was to bump those light items, specifically the repair and maintenance line item, up fairly significantly to basically show that we are covering more of that than we had been in the past. So I don't know if Heather wants to add anything.
Okay.
Heather Thomas, Public Works. Our building superintendent came on board in August with us, and has been doing a great job. The one thing we haven't been able to do is go building by building and get a good preventative maintenance plan set up. So we have bumped the repair and maintenance budget line items for all of our buildings to something that's more reasonable than what it was, but we still have a lot of work that will, in future years, increase that to establish a better preventative maintenance program.
Your Honor, if I may. So Heather, do you feel what you did is catching us up, or are we still falling behind the curve, though?
I feel like I want to make an educated decision on recommendations of where to spend money. And right now, without that preventative maintenance plan and looking at the whole structure, I don't want to, you know, put money in one, and then two years later on the road, say, hey, that probably wasn't where we needed to put the money.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Heather.
I would say one thing to think about as we get to a further item on the agenda is Fund Zero Three One. The building maintenance fund is probably where that comes out more, only because we're talking about depleting quite a bit of funding on some building projects in fiscal year twenty-four, and there's not much funding past that point. Yeah, I'm, I was gonna say, we're just looking for feedback, and if there's any questions that we can try and answer tonight, or other ones that we can answer. But we thought this would really just be an introduction of some things to talk about that we will talk more in-depth about on the January thirtieth special meeting.
So you don't want our input on these line item things right now, or not?
If you want, if you want to provide that, yeah, certainly.
Well, I'd say, go down the list, I would say the first one, I'm okay with ending the mosquito spraying, because I think it's killing some beneficial insects, too.
Your Honor, if I may. I disagree with you, Gary, on this one. It might be the only thing we disagree on. I've been down this road before. Don't cut the mosquito spraying. Four thousand dollars is not a big enough amount to really make a whole lot of difference.
Should we maybe pay for that with loss, though? We use loss to pay for the mosquito spraying instead?
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, you certainly can, and I think that is one thing to just point out here, is that number five on that list is a transfer in from council-designated loss. I think I'd given you, some of you, wrong information on a dollar amount. So prior to change an election, or an election to change the uses to increase more for council-designated back in twenty seventeen, there was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year coming into the general fund from local option sales tax. So that is the theory behind the, or the rationale behind that amount that is there right now.
Your Honor, one thing that I wanted to just kind of discuss as a council and communicate to the community is that while the general fund deficit is always an important discussion, and I am glad that we're having it, in terms of our total budget, what we're left with here is, in my opinion, not a very scary list of things to prioritize to get us to zero. One thing that I do want to hear a little bit of feedback from you, Jessica, if you wouldn't mind, is related to the suggestion of furloughs. That is a big deal. And it's not something that, compared to spraying for bugs, it's something that should never be taken lightly, and any feedback that you've received or what went into that decision-making process, I think would be helpful to the council. Thank you.
Yes, before I directly answer that, I did want to talk about, you know, when you think about three hundred and twelve thousand of the total general fund expenditures, it's only one point seven percent of the expenditures. When you narrow it down to those general revenues, it turns into three point four percent. And as a point of comparison, for this year's budget, and granted FY twenty-three doesn't look quite right yet, you know, we are transferring in two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of ARPA funds. So when you think that, we know that we have a hole in this current year budget of two hundred and eighty-nine, and we're at three twelve, there have been some adjustments that have been positive, they've just not been overwhelmingly positive. So we do see that there are some things that are good, but just not quite there to fix everything. So the issue of furlough days. So the philosophy that I apply to this is, as we look across the board of employees in the general fund, there's not one department that I can look at and say that we are overstaffed. We've done a lot of things in the last year to basically look at, are there ways we can do different, things differently when we've had some retirements and changes, and we've done those. And those changes, you know, I had hoped would have a bigger impact, but they didn't. So if we can't eliminate a position, or two, or three, or four, from the departments in the general fund, the easiest way is to say, let's look at taking, you know, a little bit away from the collective hole essentially, to help us get there. And so I think the amount that I had is that what we were looking at in terms of what a furlough day would be in the general fund would be fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars for one day. There's five days that are proposed there, so just under eighty thousand. And so I think that's what it is. I mean, no department has come forward and said, I have a position that I think could be eliminated, therefore saving this. And so that's where, when we can't do it with one, we've got to do it as a collective. And I think that philosophically, I think that makes sense with where we've come from as a team in putting a budget together. I don't think it has a positive feedback. I don't think anybody really wants to do it. I can tell you, I have no problem with it. I've done it before at another organization. It's, again, it's the collective. When you can't do something individually, what can you do collectively? And this is one of those actions that can impact every single department and help us get to a point where we need to be financially.
Your Honor. Having gone through furlough, it's never a fun topic, but at the same time, you want to cut heads or not, and personally speaking, after having gone through it as much as I was opposed originally, kind of wish I had the option every year to be able to take furlough days if I wanted to. So I mean, from somebody, I mean, having gone through it last year, two years ago, whatever it was, negative perception, but maybe negative perception for some, regardless of having gone through it or not. But I find it to be a pretty viable option when we look at the grand scheme of things, especially since it has some flexibility to it from a use throughout the year. Outside of that, not to switch gears quickly, mosquito spraying nice, but it reaches my front yard, which is not where my patio and otherwise is, so doesn't like, it covers every square inch of your yard, so personally speaking, I think its effectiveness is useless, since I still have to spray my backyard. And then I guess the only other one I wanted to highlight was item three with regards to the Communication Commission. I think MCCCC is getting a pretty fair cut for this space that they get to use, especially with the amount of electricity they likely generate of the overall bill. I think that number's light, extremely light, in my personal opinion. I think that number should be significantly more, and I think that's an area that probably, out of all of them, deserves the most focus and attention and conversation. And I, number ten, I guess, just to clear everything else, because I'm in agreeance with everything else listed, is number ten. I don't feel like that's just shifting money, so I'm not in favor of it.
Other input? I just want to ask, can we go through these one at a time, so we're just not bouncing all over the place? And, because you want, because if we don't do anything, you're doing these, right?
No, this is coming back to the discussion on the thirtieth. And so that was really where I intended to have, you know, more of the in-depth discussion. But I'm happy, just from a high level, if you want me to hit them real quick.
Oh, Your Honor, if I may, then?
Yeah.
I'm against the furloughs. If the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, counting Jessica, the nine department heads want to take a couple days a month as floaters, I'm okay with that, non-paid. But I don't have, I have a problem with the guy that's out on the streets being told what day he's got to take off. From talking to Jill, these are not floating holidays. They're not at the discretion of the employees. So the only way I could support this, if it's just limited to the department heads, we can save a lot more money, because there's bigger bang for the buck that way. Other input?
Jessica, was some thought given to moving the animal rescue league out to the local option sales tax?
At this point, no. I mean, the proposal is to bring in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of local option sales tax here. And so if you want to say it's supporting an existing expense, I mean, that is certainly something that could do. But we would keep that probably in the general fund, and it would be supported with the transfer in, if that was something you wanted to do.
Yes, it's non-employee related, so I would agree with that.
So just to give you some perspective on your local option sales tax. So for the payments we receive, we split it. So seventy-eight percent goes to property tax relief, twenty-two percent goes to council-designated. So what we have budgeted for FY twenty-four is eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars coming in for council-designated.
And just to tell you why we were planning to have more of this discussion on the thirtieth is because the thirtieth is when local option sales tax will be presented as well, and we'll give you that updated sheet that has all the different uses that are, that have been approved, and kind of the update.
You'll remind us of the balance?
I think at the end of, if, with everything that we are planning or proposing with fiscal year twenty-four, I think we were at like one point six to one point eight million for the ending balance for fiscal year twenty-four.
In the general fund, or lost?
For the local option sales tax. Yeah, and you'll get that detail in the January thirtieth packet.
It's about two point three million for council-designated fund balance.
Your Honor. Jessica, can you give me background on the Communications Commission? I'm gonna use the wrong words here, but were they forced to go to the new police department? I mean, what was the initial agreement for them going out with, to that facility?
So this is a very good history lesson. So when the facility was being designed, it was a function that was managed by the city, where the city and the county supported it. In twenty eighteen, I think it was July first, twenty eighteen, was when they became a commission and basically had all of the costs spread across all of the taxable values in the county as a whole, and not just Marshalltown and the county. And so we did not boot them out. That was never the intention. The space was there. The bond funds that the city borrowed for the building paid for, I think, two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of equipment that was eventually gifted to them. And so we have been accommodating. I think there was some nervousness about being in a city building and having to pay rent, especially a building. We hadn't operated to even know what our operational costs would be. But I do feel like we're in a better place. That lease, which I did include in the packet, does have a one-year termination notice. And so it would be easy to provide that notice with a draft of a new lease at the same time that had some sort of payment to it.
So is it fair to say your intention is if we change their rent, so to speak, that they would spread that across all the cities and the county, then?
So the communications levy is set up to do that. I'm not sure what funding mechanism they would be intending to use for that, as they're currently only using the Communications Commission levy to pay for personnel costs.
And then, since they are in that building, is part of their contract, I didn't look at it, do they have access to the fitness center?
They do not. That is one thing that we've reserved for employees only at this point, employees of the city only. And I should even narrow it further, police and fire employees only.
So the rest of the city employees don't have access to it?
No.
Oh, okay.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I think I could be talked in favor of any of these, and I think we should maybe take a closer look at moving more ARPA in here. It is one-time money. I know they loosened up the rules, but it may allow us to keep some powder dry for future years.
Anyone else? Otherwise, it'll go open to the public. Open to the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Hall with the Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. I know that hotel motel tax is not part of the proposed recommendations, but I did just want to reiterate and lean a little bit on what Jessica had said about some of the positivity we're seeing. So year over year, we're So, oh, year over year, we're seeing about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in the hotel motel tax collected. We'd like to think that we at least had a, a part in driving some of that, but the hope is that, you know, fifty thousand, roughly fifty thousand of that is going towards your existing, your budget and the deficit that you've got. So some of the growth that we're seeing is hoping to start closing some of those deficit gaps. And so I know, again, it's not on the chopping block tonight, not for consideration tonight, but something I do want you to keep in mind is that, that the growth that we're, we're working towards will help to ultimately close that, that deficit gap. Thank you.
It is nice to see the Holiday Inn open now again, too. Yes, sir.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So you can look up, everybody can look up valuation reports on the county's website if you go to the auditors page and I think it's real estate and taxes and things like that, and you can get copies. And, and in reviewing that, it looks like our valuations went up for the city of Marshalltown 23 million. The problem is that we handicapped ourselves with a total of thirty million dollars in TIF, which means we don't get the tax revenue from that TIF. And that was a seventeen million dollar increase over the last year. And so we basically cut our own throats using TIF on our tax revenues. That would, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a deficit if we wouldn't have done that. We would actually have excess. And previously on lost, ninety-five percent of lost went to the taxpayer, to property tax relief, to, to streets and roads. And we had a 5% slush fund for the council. And now we have an even better deal. We have seventy-eight percent going to the, to property tax relief and a 22% slush fund. And all we're doing is using a shell game to move money from lost to pay for some of these expenses, which then we're borrowing for to do roads and sewers. So it's, it's, it's a fun game to watch and keep track of, but we handicapped ourselves with TIF. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Jim Shaw. I have a question about the furloughs. Are they mandatory or voluntary? At Emerson, when things got slow and people needed off, some people could afford to take voluntary layoffs, some couldn't. So it was a voluntary thing before they got to a mandatory thing. So I'd like to know what process is a seniority or how, how it's going. And then another thing about the budget, and this may not apply here, but I think one thing that doesn't need to be cut is the police department's budget. These people put their lives on the line every day. I don't think they're getting paid enough, so thank you.
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. One thing that I was looking at with this, the line item or whatever, was the summer splash. And currently it's what, eighty-five, ninety-five dollars for that? And I'm seeing that you guys want to increase it quite a bit, and you're comparing it to the Y. You can't do that because summer splash is meant for kids who probably can't afford to be a member at the Y. So just keep that in mind, again, that the summer splash is for, for kids so they don't go into the river and drown. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Your Honor, Ms. Eaton brought up a good question, and if, if I'm out of line or out of place, tell me, and I can get this information later. But on the TIF agreements that we did with the, the criteria, are we following up to make sure all the criteria is being met? Can we cancel, cancel some of those TIF agreements?
Well, I would say we, we probably can't cancel any because all of obligations are currently being met. Most of them don't have specific obligations. I think we only have one that has a job requirement to it. And so pretty much most of ours, I'll say there's an exception that we haven't started paying on, which is the Willards and Hopkins. That is part of this next fiscal year, which was new TIF that we didn't have before. But, but most of these are rebate agreements of some amount of tax produced by the property. And so that's, that's really what it is. So as, as I, I keep trying to think of a, a good example, but they have to essentially pay their property taxes before we do any rebate to them. So there's, there's the ties in that way. People just don't get money because we approved an agreement.
But the one that had the, the employment threshold, has that been met?
Yeah, they, they provide their documentation each year before we certify.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor, one point I'd like to make about TIF is that if TIF didn't exist, a lot of these valuations wouldn't increase. So it's not like it's a zero-sum game.
Back to the public. Anybody else? Okay, I, I know that our meeting at the end of the month, the special budget meeting is probably going to be where we really get into the thick and thin of this, but it's nice to have the options to look at for future discussion, and you can do some research between now and then.
Yeah, and I would just also say, like, if, if there are any questions that come up in this kind of week in between meetings, Diana and I are available to you, so please feel free to reach out to us. If there's something that you want us to research and bring back to that meeting on the 30th, we can certainly do that as well. So please, please feel free to be in contact with I, with Diana and I over these next few days as we get that agenda ready.
On to the next one.
Okay, we're going to go over a few special revenue funds. So special revenue funds are restricted for a specific purpose. So first we're going to talk about is Fund 112, which is Employee Benefits Fund. So again, we're going to levy the property taxes for this, and then we get some utility tax and the backfill. And then we transfer the money out to the general fund to reimburse those costs. So we're bringing in two, we're requesting, if you approve, we're requesting 2.3 million in revenues. We transfer out 3 million, so our fund balance will go down by 714,000 dollars. The reason we're doing this is because we've been accumulating funds in this particular fund for the last several years, and we think we can draw some of that down for fund balance. The next one is the Police and Fire Retirement System. Same thing, we request property taxes and utility taxes and the backfill, and then we transfer the money out. So we're going to transfer out 1.2 million dollars. So that fund balance, same thing, we decided that the fund balance was getting big enough, we could use some of the fund balance to keep the overall property tax lower. And then the last fund is 119, Emergency Fund. So again, that's that 27 cent levy that we talked about earlier. We get the 810 levy, we get the 27 cent emergency to property tax levy. So we got property taxes, utility excise tax, and backfill. And then that just transfers to the general fund. So in the memo, it shows the projected fund balances that we have here. That big enough to see? So you can see the Employee Benefits Fund. We ended at 3.4 million by doing these transactions this year. We'd have 2.7 million at the end of the fiscal year 24. Police and Fire is going from half a million down to 431,000. And then the Emergency Fund would normally go to zero. I will make sure before we close the budget that I will zero it out and send it to the general fund on the budget system. Didn't realize it was that way till I already had all the memos and everything done, so I thought we could just do that later. So any questions on these items? If not, we'll go to Road Use Tax Fund. Okay, so again, Road Use Tax, pay at the pump and collect the tax for that, and vehicle registrations. And then it goes towards upkeep of roads and salaries for the Public Works Department. So looking at the fund balance, we ended at 6.3 million dollars last June, projecting a slight increase this year, and then a decrease of 469,000 in FY24 will still leave us with a balance of 5.9 million dollars at the end of fiscal year 24. Any questions on that?
You, you went past the Transit Fund.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And the maximum property tax levy as well.
So Transit Department is an enterprise fund, so they need to pay for themselves. But we do, we are able to do a tax levy. So we're requesting a 275,000 dollar tax levy for Transit. So the last several years, they have gotten CARES Act funds from the pandemic, but in FY24, that all goes away. So last year, we were at... See, what was it, levy last year? I don't know if I wrote that down. Let me look. 250? 250. And so we're bumping it up another 25,000 dollars. So from the last meeting, talked about pair of transit rides, so that cost increased. So we needed to increase that, too. Uh, the memo kind of outlines the different funding sources, and we did have a chart here that showed the actual ridership, but...
And that chart, actually, I did hand out at each of your spots during the conversion of, from Word to PDF, it, it removed that. So, but you do have that at your seats.
Your Honor, if I may?
If I may.
So Diana and Kevin, the rate will stay at a dollar, you're projecting through 2024 fiscal year? The ridership?
Kevin Pickleworth, Transit Administrator. Are you talking about the fare box? Yeah, yeah, $1, correct.
So you're predicting you're going to hold that all the way through fiscal year 2024?
Correct. We can always increase it, but we would have to have a public hearing to increase.
And then when are we going to have a mobile council tour on one of the buses?
Tell me, tell me a date. Yeah.
We just can't go over the VODAC. Thanks. Thanks, Your Honor.
So any other questions on the Transit? Okay, moving on. Okay. So this is what the certification looks like when we get, when we get the budget finalized. So based on, we talked about the 810 levy, talked about Transit 275, Marshalltown Arts and Civic Center 100,000, our liability insurance at 372,000, the local emergency management at 36, we have BAND at 9,000. The library is, is a voted levy, so it's at 27 cents. So that automatically propulates to 256. And then the agriculture, and then we have those benefits. I just talked about the emergency levy, Police and Fire Retirement, and employee benefits. And then we'll have the debt service levy and the Capital Projects Fund. So when we were doing this, again, because we wanted to keep the levy rate the same overall, we did use some fund balance in these Employee Benefits and Police and Fire Retirement, as well as the debt service. So I'm not asking you to take action on this today, but I wanted to show it to you because it plays into this document, next document, which is the maximum property tax levy. Let me go back here. So overall, you'll see the same numbers over here, that's in blue for the different levies, except that this report does not include any voted-on levies, which is the BAND, the library, does not include the debt service levy, or the capital improvement plan. So I thought I should show you that other one first because it all plays into this one. So this report was developed a few years ago, again, by the state legislature. They wanted you to know how many, how much dollars were increasing from year to year and on these specific levies only. And if we look at the current fiscal year, that's what we requested on these specific levies, and compare it to what the value, what the levy would have been if the valuations went up to what it is in fiscal year 24. So again, this current fiscal year, we are at 13.56 for these specific levies. If we use the same dollar amounts for levies, but increase the valuations to what it's going to be for fiscal year 24, then your levy rate would have been 13.22. So we come to fiscal year 24. You can see that some, some dollars go up, the benefit levies go down. So overall, for these particular levies, it goes down, so the total is almost 12 million dollars. So it's dropped almost 600,000 dollars. So it's a 5.27% decrease. So if you remember in prior years, how we got the levy to stay the same is that we would use local option sales tax, the property tax relief dollars. So again, because we're changing the source, it changes this document. So there does need to be a public hearing on this, and we can set that hearing at the next meeting, set the hearing date at the next meeting.
Uh, the one thing I'd just like to add to this is, this is an exercise that we have to go through because the Iowa code changed. Essentially, when we're doing what we're doing this year, which is reducing the ask on some of these very specific levies, it is, it is showing that it's not increasing at all. So, but the legislature's intent was to show you when we do see valuation increases, what does that look like? I believe if you are going to increase more than 3%, you have to have a two-thirds vote of the council to approve this. Because we are not doing that, this will just be a simple majority of the council to approve this. But as Diana said initially, it is that total tax levy that is what matters in the bigger picture of things, because that is ultimately what would be certified and what would be processed by the county treasurer's office for, for payment to the city in the next fiscal year.
So I'm incorrect in, in assuming that you wanted to keep the overall property tax levy the same?
We'll take that as a yes, and that is what we will be bringing back at the next meeting. As Diana mentioned, debt service is kind of that final thing to finalize on there. And so that is, that is what we'll bring back to you on the January 30th meeting.
Okay. You'll go on to the next one.
Okay, I will try and keep these somewhat quick as well. So I ran new reports for projects by fund and then projects by detail. Where we saw some changes being made was in areas where we didn't have property tax revenue the last time, the last meeting, January 9th, as well as Fund 145, we, we had more revenue coming in related to our donations reimbursement for the tornado. And so that is kind of where we're able to put more money in fiscal year 25 into a wheel loader. But because I brought it up earlier to Councilmember Thompson, I did want to bring up Fund 031 because this is also one where we did make some changes. 031 is where we have a lot of these larger capital projects. It would really be anything that would be 5,000 dollars or over would be paid out of here versus our general fund in, in most cases. And so you can kind of see FY24, we're planning some significant projects kind of across the, across the board, between Police and Fire, as well as the Carnegie Building, Coliseum. The generator portion has been budgeted here for quite some time, and then some projects at the airport, as well as I thought there is the library sidewalks as well. And so when you get down to sort of the, the end balance... And so when you get down to sort of the, the end balance for where we're at, we're planning to carry over essentially $101,000, $102,000 into fiscal year '25. We had more projects that were packed into fiscal year '24, but without having good cost estimates, we didn't feel like it was fair to budget all of those, knowing that we could easily overspend what the fund has and put that into a negative position. So we did move some out to fiscal year '25, but you'll see that there is not funding there to fund a lot of these larger building projects as we get out into those later years. And so as we talk about the franchise fee moving forward, there would be a portion that would be coming into this fund, which would allow us to do some of these, these projects. If not, we're probably talking about some other funding sources, whether it be geo bonding or looking at local option sales tax, just as sort of the simple thing. But we're not there yet, so, but I did want to point out that we did make some fairly significant changes with this fund, just to make sure there was going to be something left by the end of fiscal year '24.
Your Honor, and Jessica, you don't want to talk about anything in '25, '26, or '27, right?
Um, we, we certainly can. I mean, I'm, I believe everybody would be here to be able to answer any specific questions.
What's the 50,000 for security here in the council meetings?
Yeah, so that was a project that we kind of started with the coating on the doors that didn't get fully completed, and then looking at a, a roll door gate to fully close off the rest of the building from this area when we are using this space for nighttime meetings and things. The, the ultimate goal would be to go to a key card system that's compatible with the Police and Fire building is using, so that all of our accesses into office spaces, which the public is not invited to go at this point in night, in the night, would be secure from essentially this part of the building, which would make this part of the building a lot more usable than, than it is currently.
Thank you.
I do want to say this is the second draft. A third draft will be discussed on February 13th. February 13th is when there will be a presentation about the Water Plaza and where we'll revisit that Fund 364, which has the 2022 general obligation bonds, and see if there are any decisions you want to make before we finalize. Right now, the plan would be to set public hearings on the CAP, the budget, on the February 27th meeting. So February 13th is kind of that cutoff of, of when we need some final direction unless we're going to have a special meeting the week following. So any other questions about the CAP before I move to the debt capacity overview? Okay, so I wanted to, we typically go over this each year in terms of looking at what projects are in Fund 353. The first page here is just really a point of comparison of the, the projects that we did fund this year. And then the second page is really where we're at for this next fiscal year. So we did have debt capacity that we did not use in fiscal year, or in the current fiscal year. And so when we don't use that, that effectively rolls over into the next fiscal year. So FY '23 and FY '24 capacity numbers are correct. As you can see, as you start to look at where we go in the following years, we are looking at more, more projects than the funding that is available. And so that's not untypical for, or atypical from where we're at kind of in a first draft, looking at things, especially when we do have some projects that are a little bit farther out. And so you can see with Fund, with fiscal year '24, we're looking at, you know, a downtown improvement plan, East Main Streets and Center Street being a very large project. We'll have a cost estimate of between a 60 and a 90% cost estimate on that in the September timeframe, I believe. So we'll have more to discuss when it actually comes time to borrow. So this is just setting out sort of, this is what we think we would be borrowing for at the end of 2023. One thing to note, and I think there is a difference here for, for you to think about, how we go forward with this. So we essentially have $10.3 million of debt cap, capacity available. Calendar year 2023 is one where we have removed all bank qualification because of that very large $13 million state revolving fund bond. So that kind of take, took care of that off the table, so we're not limited to a $10 million cap like we have been in prior years. And so I would recommend that we, we kind of keep, we keep fiscal year '24 the same and ultimately reevaluate where we're going and see where that looks like when we have a better cost estimate on East Main Street. We're so early in the design process that it's impossible to say what that would truly look like once we get further down the road. So any, any questions on this? One, one thing to point out, this is based on assessed valuation, not taxable valuation. We do know that there is going to be a bump in assessed valuation, I think on, is it residential, commercial, and industrial, or just residential and commercial?
I believe all three.
So we, we are anticipating that for what would be assessment year 2023, fiscal year 2025. No adjustments have been made to reflect that at this point, that this is just really showing a 2% increase in assessed valuation from year to year. So that's kind of where the assumptions are on this one, and ultimately, I'm open for any questions.
Your Honor, if I may?
May.
Jessica, does the sidewalk gap project end in fiscal year 2025?
So I'll let, I'll let Heather talk about that one.
Heather Thomas, Public Works. Currently up there, you have $500,000 a year fiscal year '24 through '26. The sidewalk gap project, when it was initiated, had many phases. I don't know if it was 10, 12, I don't remember off the top of my head. And that does not get through all those phases. I will be bringing a discussion item forward to, to council to look at the priorities of where we have made on the sidewalk gap project when it was initiated, where we're at and where we're going from here, that can aid in some of those discussions on how much funds are needed in future fiscal years.
And with Heather still standing up here, one of the things that I know she and I had talked about, it didn't really come up, but you do see the Phase 2 Center Street viaduct, that depending on the timing of where we're at with the first phase, this could be bumped back a few years to, up to 10 years more than likely?
Yeah, so the, the funding that we're looking at applying for, that that's part of that 1.5 million, the stipulation on that program is that you can only get that funding once every 10 years. So one of the questions I had asked Stanley is, okay, if we apply for it, get it, and we construct it in 2025, can the next phase wait till 2035? And from a structural safety perspective, the possibility is that yes, really the downside of that is going to be appearance and aesthetics, but for a million and a half dollars, I, I think that would be my proposal if that's the, the way that this project proceeds, is that we would bump that project further off.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Heather, from the sidewalk gap perspective, we've addressed at least the areas around the schools, that's complete through everything, or what, does this finish that up, or does this go beyond that?
I think this probably would be doing through the schools, and that about stops right there. There's additional phases beyond that. There's some question on this next round of the school, if some of that will be proceeding or not.
Other questions or comments up here? Okay.
So this is, again, this is just a draft. If there's any projects that you'd like to discuss further, you know, we, we certainly can do this. Otherwise, the plan would be to bring this back on the February 13th meeting as well, unless you'd like to see it again for further discussion at the January 30th meeting.
Okay, we've got your number.
And I was going to say, Your Honor, while we were meeting, Steve Leidinger had sent me an email and requested that we not go into closed session, that he was questioning the viability of using that section for the proposed closed session. So therefore, the recommendation is to not have a closed session this evening.
Yeah, I can just sense a collective sigh with that report. With that being the end of our agenda, I appreciate everybody coming tonight, and we'll close the meeting at 7:29. Thank you.